Number one, Nordist and City of New Brunswick and the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the City of New Brunswick to enter into a financial agreement with 78 East Denabula, Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption. Number two, Nordist Amendment Supplementary Revised General Ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-20, Handicap Parking Schedule 40, Parking Spaces for Handicapped Persons, Schedule 39, Parking Spaces for Handicapped Persons, Add One Parking Space at 90 Jersey Avenue, Add One Parking Zone at 16th A Street. And we have ordinance for first reading, amended management and salary ordinance, add title, Senior Technician Information Systems, amend two salary ranges. Two, amended Municipal Employees Association MBEA ordinance, add title, Public Safety, Community Telecommunication Training. Then we have resolutions, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll, 8517 to 818, 81917 to 9117, Management Retroactive Payroll. Three, authorize a refund and redeem tax sales certificates. Four, award of contract with the Institute of Forensic Technology for Psychological Services for the Police and Fire Department, toll on period commencing September 7, 2017, ending September 6, 2018, specification number 61617RFP, not to exceed $18,000 fair and open. Five, approve request for use of city property requested by Middlesex County Home Services, location Warmome Monument Park for prostate cancer awareness and education, date Tuesday, September 26, 2017, rain date Tuesday, October 3, 2017, time 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Six, approve request for use of city property requested by Embrace Kids Foundation, location Jubilee Park Pavilion and Grassy Area for Kids' Activities, School, and Patients' Families, date Sunday, October 1, 2017, time 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Seven, approve request for city property requested by AfriGama Delta, Jubilee Park Grassy Area along East and Avenue, Sorority Bit Day, welcome to new members, Sunday, September 17, 2017, time 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Eight, approve request for use of city property requested by Embrace American Volleyball, location Jubilee Park Outfield Behind Field Number Four, and Grass Tennis Course for Grassy, for Grass Volleyball Tournament, date, time, Saturday, September 23, 2017, from 5:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday, September 24, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Or, yeah, 9:00 p.m. Nine, approve amendment and resolution, reason to pay the final bill in the amount of the common law firm, Special Counsel to the City of New Brunswick, Ash Marvac Construction, from $317,086,064 to $320,682,14. Ten, approve authorization to advertise for Rutgers Village Main Replacement Project, Phase Two, specification number 62517W11, approved chapter for 159 budget insertion, State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, for Detective Matthew Tarantino, Community Police and Grant Program, amount $10,000. Twelve, approve execution of joint funding agreement with United States Department of the Interior, Geological Survey, New Jersey Border Science Services Investigations, not to exceed $16,900, non-pro-tongue. Thirteen, approve request for use of city property requested by Zaki Barrow and Richland Foundation, for location Alice Jennings Park Walk and Block Party for more peace and unity within the community, date Saturday, September 16, 2017, rain date Saturday, September 23, 2017, time 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Fourteen, approve request for the city property requested by Bach Lee, Bach S. Lee, location Royal Memorial Park for Christian Feeding Ministry, Food Distribution and Spiritual Guidance, Sunday, September 10, 17, 24, October 1, 8, 15, 22, 29, November 5, 12, 19, 26, December 3, 10, 17, 24, 31, 2017, time 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Dates, Monday, September 11, 12, 25, October 2, 9, 16, 23, 30, November 6, 13, 2027, December 4, 11, 18, 2017, time 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. Fifteen, authorize application acceptance and execution of grant for New Jersey Highway Safety for drunk driving enforcement fund, F. Buck, fiscal year 2017. Sixteen, approve amendment and resolution, R-DAS 0811710, reason to pay additional legal fees in amount of $1,525 to Crystal D. Adams, Esquire, Adams Buchanan, and Palo LLC, representation of Tom Loughlin, Third City Administrator, in matter of Arthur Anderson, Adolph, versus the City of New Brunswick, Adolph, punitive damage claims, from $31,565,47 to $33,090,47. Seventeen, authorize application acceptance and execution of grant, New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety for 2017, Drive Over, Get Pulled Over, Labor Day. Eighteen, approve amendment of resolution for R-DAS 011737, reason additional $20,000 of ongoing tax appeals for 2017 Division of Possession, with Holman, Longwood, Moran, Dunst, Duquesne, LLP, and 2017 Special Counsel for Tax Appeals, Division of Possession, from $50,000 to $70,000. Nineteen, approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Freighter, location Memorial State and Practice Field, fundraiser for the Raiders Football Team Cookout for Team and Family Members, Friday, August 25, 2017, time 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., non-pro-tongue. Twenty, approve ABC liquor license removal. Twenty-one, authorize renewal of interlocal service contract agreement with Canoe Sex County Department of Public Health and Safety and Public Health Safety Services and Programs, January 21, January 1, 2018, to December 31, 2018, not to exceed $246,017,20. Twenty-two, authorize purchase by Fire Department and State Contract, A-88728-T277, from Chesus, Winter Incorporated, doing business at Winter Ford, for one, 2018, Interceptor Utility, all-wheel-drive vehicle, not to exceed $27,112. Twenty-three, approve award of contract with Baker &amp; Taylor Incorporated, books purchased from wholesale distributor for the New Brunswick Public Library, term 12-month period commencing September 7, 2017, ending September 6, 2018, specification number 61817RFP, not to exceed $50,000 fair and open. Twenty-four, approve amendment for resolution, R-DAS 071727, reason to pay additional legal fees in amount of $3,600 to Benedict and Almond, for police director Anthony Caputo, in the matter of Arthur Anderson, Adolph, versus the City of New Brunswick, from $37,655 to $41,255. Twenty-five, approve request to turn towns' teal, for ribbon and sign campaign for the Center of New Brunswick to create awareness for ovarian cancer symptoms, date September 7, 2017, to September 30, 2017. Twenty-six, approve resolution, authorize memorizing of agreement between the City of New Brunswick and Township of North Brunswick for border line relocation. Twenty-seven, approve board contract, wireless contracts included, doing business as wireless communications electronic for radio maintenance for the Police Department, term three-year period commencing September 13, September 18, 2017, and ended September 17, 2020, specification number 60917P, not to exceed $163,120. Twenty-eight, approve amendment of emergency procurement for the ventilation of three vacant structures, Welton Street, with North Star Contracting Company Incorporated, not to exceed $87,300, purchase order number D97676, D97677. Twenty-nine, approve request for city property requested by Rowan Club, location Jubilee Park and Track, Small Pavilion, Collegiate Race Club, hosting 6K and 8K races, Sunday, October 3, October 1, 2017, time 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Thirty, approve amendment of resolution, reason to pay the legal bills in amount of $2,440 to Benedict and Almond, for police director Anthony Caputo, in the matter of Stephen Middleton, Adolph, versus the City of New Brunswick, from $47,754 to $50,194.50. Thirty-one, approve request for city property requested by Y. Islam? Yeah, Y. Islam. Location Jubilee Park, loaned by Senior System, Eastern Avenue, Huntington Street, entrance to the right, for informational booth of Islamic faith, date Saturday, September 23, 2017, rain date October 7, 2017, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thirty-two, approve amendment of resolution, R-DAS 021790, change order number one, with T.R. Wengler, for security improvements, Phase One, and border utility, rebid, specification number 52916WR, amount $2,080, approve, this change will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original contract. Thirty-three, approve amendment of resolution, R-DAS 081717, reason to pay additional legal fees in amount of $10,625 to Arleo and Downeyu LLC, for the representation of Mayor James Cahill, in matter of Stephen Middleton, of the City of New Brunswick, and Arthur Anderson,[557.72]
Regarding the police lawsuits, 716, 724, both the matter involving the current and former police officers. This would be the Anderson matter. Is there a trial date yet for that? Okay, and I do want to thank Mr. Shamie again. His office was able to give me a list of all the parties. Counsel might not be aware, maybe you are, but you're being asked to approve only the representation for the city workers on punitive damage claims, but that the case is actually much, much more expensive and that there's many other firms involved. And is the Boers Golden Foley firm one of those? The Boers firm?
London, Ohio.
Okay. And just in the interest of efficiency and not wasting your clerk's time, could you ask Mr. Shamie if he'd be able to just give me, not tonight, but put in writing the figures of how much each of those lawyers has cost so far, rather than me over requesting all of the bills and having those be sent to me and then adding up all numbers myself? Could Mr. Shamie?
Frankly, every resolution that counsel approves on an attorney for punitive damages, as we see on the agenda, has the number right here. Continues to-
Because from one number to-
Exactly. With respect to 16, it went from $31,000,565,47 to $33,090,47. So it's right built into the resolution. That's the running total, if you will, Mr. Crowe. If you're speaking to the fees that are paid by the GIP to the other counsel, I have no record of that. I don't have that information. I couldn't provide that.
So really, the city doesn't have a record of the bills that are piling up for this case besides the punitive damages claims? Perhaps Mr. Lockman would be able to help me then?
My answer would be the same. The joint insurance fund has the data. I suppose you could ask them for that.
Is Mr. Lockman not the chair of the GIP?
I am. I'm not sitting in that capacity at the moment, but-
So I'll ask you at a different time when you're in the other capacity?
Probably be able to do it.
Okay, fair enough. I'd like to learn about 726, the water line relocation. Why did it, what was the need for this and what problem is?
Water line relocation?
Yes. It's a complicated story. I'll try and make it as brief as I possibly can. North Brunswick has a sewer line that runs through New Brunswick on its way to the Utility Authority. They had to do some rehabilitation work, and it was a conflict between the two lines. In fact, they were replacing a manhole, and we had a 20-inch sewer line that was adjacent to it. In order to replace that, we had to relocate approximately 150 feet of this 20-inch water line to get it out of the work zone. So we're working in coordination with North Brunswick to do that, to have their contractor, who's pre-qualified, to do the work to actually move that line over.
Okay.
We'll pay eventually for that, though. We got a very, very good price for that.
What's the price?
No, it's $274,000.
Yeah.
We'll reimburse North Brunswick.
Right, so 150 feet, I heard?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 20-inch, right, in large. And they got two pieces a day.
Oh, so that would be near George's Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very excited.
So I asked about this the last minute. It was an emergency procurement for asbestos removal of the three vacant structures on Welton Street. Why was the demolition also an emergency procurement?
Same reason I offered it the last minute. The construction code official was concerned of the structural integrity of all three buildings. They had been boarded up, but had been entered by some folks that sucked that it was becoming a security concern. Based on his advice to me, I called for a number of quotes. We had two. I awarded to the low bidder under an emergency procurement.
732 is a rebid for security improvements. Can you explain why the amount changed? I guess "change" or not "rebid," but why? What was the change, if you can tell me?
This 72-
Good morning, Bill.
Yeah.
Security improvements?
We went out, we applied for a grant to have a certain amount of security cameras installed at the treatment plant, in particular, near the membrane area. The work came in far below what we had originally estimated the work to be, so we got a tremendous price on it. As a matter of fact, it's only a fraction of what the grant was in order to do that work. We hired the contractor that was doing the work. That was an expert in installing these cameras to review the entire treatment plant and go over the entire system. So going forward, when we go with the next phase of the grant, we'll be able to come up with a more complete number and get more work done for what's available under the grant.
Okay, so I heard cameras. Is that the only item?
Well, security, we don't like to talk about that, but it is a security system, so... Which includes cameras and other methods as well.
Understood. Okay. And the last one I want to speak about is 734. It's the Board of Ethics Special Conflict Council. Is the old attorney, Mr. Vignolo, going to come back and be the attorney again for the Ethics Board?
This attorney is the conflict attorney. It's listed as such. Mr. Vignolo has been the board attorney, but he has some handling matters. Ultimately, it'd be up to the board to decide.
Okay, so will the law department be making a recommendation as to whether Mr. Vignolo should be put back in that role?
I don't know if they're going to make a recommendation. And obviously, Mr. Vignolo, I know him by the board, so does Mr. Jost. Mr. Jost will continue in any capacity once his job is done with his conflict matters, so I don't think it would be fair to speculate what those gentlemen are desired to do or how they desire to fill their roles before that board.
I trust that the council and the law department know my feelings about Mr. Vignolo and his fitness for the position. It's just wrong to have an ethics violator be the Ethics Board Attorney. As you know, the fundamental building block of ethics at the municipal level is the FDS forms, the Financial Disclosure Statements. And every official, including the attorneys on these boards, has to file one every year that they're working in that capacity. Of course, Mr. Vignolo never filed until I filed a formal complaint against him. And indeed, he was serving not only as the New Brunswick Ethics Board Attorney, but the Middlesex County Ethics Board Attorney, and I guess it's all relative. The New Brunswick Ethics Board is behaving better than the Middlesex County Ethics Board, so I guess you've got that going for you. And Mr. Jost ain't perfect either, but he's way better than Mr. Vignolo. So to the extent that you have an effect on the outcome, I would encourage the council and everybody in power to support having an ethical Ethics Board Attorney, one who follows the rules, because otherwise the credibility of the entire board is undermined. Thank you.
Just for the record, if you, Mr. Crowe referenced ethics charges against Mr. Vignolo, there's been no final adjudication with respect to those charges, so I don't want anyone to believe that the board is judging that he has committed, did commit, an ethical violation. So that matter is still pending, to my knowledge, in the Ethics Board.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions?
Resolution?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's the resolution. Now we have a discussion by council first?
Yes, I just want to discuss it by council. First, we do have, we instituted, well, we've instituted the municipal ID program. Okay, so, okay, Eric, okay. You want to elaborate a little bit?
Okay. We got a space set up. We've got all hardware in, which I think is something about $20,000 plus, including a machine, which I will not try to explain, which verifies documents. I just tricked it to magic. We did the public announcement of the start of making appointments on Tuesday. We have made, in two days, up to 6:00 PM tonight, just about 90 appointments. We also have, trying to think of the appropriate term, test subjects with the Esperanza project, Women Aware, and Trinity Square coming in with their clients or participants, because what we want to make sure of is that when those 90 people and then the hundreds after them come in, if the people have followed the instructions, we can get them in, get them out, get them done, and everything is going to run right. And we have found all sorts of interesting challenges. For example, with the clients from Women Aware. Abusive spouses often don't let their wives have any paperwork, any documents. It's a way of controlling them. So we're going to have to work out how we can help those people because they need documents. So, anything else I can answer? Welcome.
Also, a lot of us can remember four years ago, Hurricane Sandy, how our region was devastated by it. And you really have no control over what happens, you know, natural disasters. But there's an effort right now. We all saw last week in the newspapers what happened, and on the news, but I don't really read news. On the news, what happened in Houston, the whole greater Texas area. And I know that we could be affected by it anytime. There were, people were generous giving to our area. And I know that there's several initiatives to try to send as much help down to Houston or down to the area as possible. There's a lot of, I tell a lot of caution people because there's a lot of scams going on out there, where people are collecting and keeping it to themselves. There's a lot of long-time organizations. But I know that there is credible groups within the city that are trying to collect. Mr. Pittman, you want to elaborate on that? I want to put you on the spot. You're talking about Houston, about the collection for Houston for the, you know, you want to elaborate? I want to jump the spot. Okay. Mr. Pittman, I know along with us and a few other people who are trying to get an effort. It's not just about water. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, this is joint effort with me, Tomell Pittman, Council President Glenn Fleming, and Councilwoman Chanel Potten, Franklin Township, and philanthropist Ashper Brev. We're joining forces to make an effort to actually drive to Houston, Texas, because there's a lot of organizations that a lot of people, regular general community residents donate greatly, you know, for lack of better terms, you know, let's see, Red Cross, things of that nature. The percentage that you donate, you know, only a small percentage ever gets to the people. And there's concerns about, you know, biased treatment in Houston as we speak, as far as dispersing resources that, you know, people are receiving, for whatever reason it is. So we elected to put a trip together, but we're going to actually go down and disperse the items ourselves. I'm in touch with the person, or we're only in touch with a person on the grounds in Houston, Texas, and they're giving us, day by day, information on how conditions are down there. So we got a good read of how things are going to be, and how the temperature is now. And once we get to, we have a better state, you know, they reached out to other organizations. So once we get to, we will receive in a great manner. It's a great effort, you know, it's, you know, grassroots, you know, and taking initiative without waiting on anyone to do it. And I'm glad that Councilman Fleming is aboard this project. Thanks a lot.
Anyone else?
I just want to, oh, I just want to say thank you to the various organizations, some of them within the city, the Police Department, the Teen Center, other organizations, Salvation Army, San Francisco Anderson, because they give children in our community backhats as well in the past two weeks. I think they have given over 500 backhats, you know, between all of them. So I think that's great. And on behalf of the families that I serve, that I see, and everybody else, and residents, I thank you for that effort. Thank you for putting into that.
I'd like to thank the Rutgers University housing community. I had the pleasure to speak to about 300, 400 students, adults, New Brunswick police, RU police, New Brunswick workers, City Hall where they all get together, and then they go out to the different wards that are close to the college to try to inform the students that are there, the residents that are there, about how to act, how to behave, where they can go when they have different problems, stuff like that. So hopefully that was a success, and the city will be vice of calm.
All right, now we go for a public discussion. Anybody want to speak? You have, I imagine you have five minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Who do you mean? Once again, Charles Crowe, the Rutgers University today. First question, are you ready to call for the impeachment of the president?
No.
Does the council have any statement on the Trump administration's decision to end the Deferred Action for Child Reprival Program, which I understand will affect 400 to 500 Rutgers students and countless others in the local community?
Not on the council, but I know I can. Yeah, nothing to say.
Okay.
But I just, as personally, I think it's one more, one more situation where we have someone who doesn't understand what it is to be an American, and what it is to be service armed, to be one, country united, and this is even more, probably more strange, and more faced to what we already know. That's, you know, so I think it's horrendous, terrible. These are young people that have been here, that were brought by the parents when they were kids, most of them. They have no criminal record. They're working. They did what they needed to do. And we just punish them as if they were criminals, and we're not hearing the machino means. So I think that's, it's a disgrace. It's a sad, for me, it's a sad, it's a sad, everything added up, this country is in a sad state, personally, I feel.
And like you said, he went back on many promises anyway. And I know it caused a lot of fear and anxiety in people, not just that, but a whole lot of other things, because he has, I talked to somebody yesterday, he's offended a lot of groups besides that, LGBTQ, TQ community, when he did transgender ban, he did the African-American community, and Jewish people at the same time in Charlottesville, and recently the Duff.
I certainly disagree with everything Councilman Fleming brought up and stuff like that, and I hope that Congress will do what they have to, pass laws, take care of.
I hope so too, and I'm disgusted and, you know, it's particularly sick because it affects children. It's, you could see Jeff Sessions smiling as he made the announcement. And, you know, I was very moved by the event over at Rutgers. It was happening simultaneously where Congressman Malone, Mayor Wilda Diaz, and President Baruch G. Rutgers were taking a strong stand against the president and hearing from some of these dreamers about their stories of how hard it was just to get here in the first place, let alone the struggle of living with this stigma or constant fear. It causes severe problems in these individuals and the families. And what the president did on Tuesday might not have been an impeachable offense, but it absolutely underscores the need to impeach him, impeach him, because you said it's one more thing to add to the list, right? How many more things do we have to add to this list before Council President Fleming, before you'll call on Congressman Malone to impeach the president?
I'm going to wait for the process to go through, because we, as a local body, we also have things that are affecting people, such as kids getting killed on the streets every day, which I feel like that's something that directly affects us. I feel like the kids that are dying from overdoses is affecting us directly, which we have a direct effect on. Right now, our council as a body is spending energy to call for a symbolic impeachment. I don't think that's conducive right now, because it'd be like somebody that hasn't been indicted yet, and we're calling for them to be convicted.
That's inaccurate.
No, it's not inaccurate.
No, that is inaccurate.
What's the standard, what's the standard for impeachment?
The standard for impeachment is treason, bribery, or high, other high crimes and misdemeanors. And an impeachment is tantamount to an indictment.
An indictment is first an impeached at.
Correct.
Yes.
And there are 435 individuals in this country who have the power to impeach him.
Absolutely.
And two brave people, two brave members of Congress, Congressman Green from Texas and Congressman Sherman from California, back in May, introduced H.R. 438, an article of impeachment that is rock solid and should be voted for. And if people like Frank Malone won't be willing to stick their neck out on the line and do that, it will never happen. And I, we just came from a rally where we had a couple dozen people outside in the rain, outside in the congressman's office, calling on him to do this. You're a leader. You are the leader of this council. Why won't you pick up the phone or pick up Twitter and contact Frank Malone and tell him that it's important? Because here's the real deal. Our country has a lot of problems, and impeaching the president won't solve them all, but we won't be able to solve any if he's in there. He is holding this country back. He is doing damage to this country every day, and literally, all of us are living in danger. Every day that goes by with a dangerous maniac in charge is a day that we are in danger.
Where are these people?
You are all of us in New Brunswick are in danger because of the regime.
You know, where were these people on election day? All the passion, where were these people on election day that you said they were not voting, or they was going to sit out that election? Now, see, election has consequences. I was physically depressed on that election day, physically depressed on that election day. But now, we want to usurp, we want to usurp everything else and call for his impeachment instead of working through the process to get him out, or working towards 2018 to take away his power. But a lot of people now, all of a sudden, now we see the consequences, and we're saying, okay, just because somebody, and I can't call him that name, just because somebody is a crazy leader at this point, yeah, you can use another amendment to get him out of there, meaning he's incompetent. But as far as going for high crimes and misdemeanors, Mueller right now has an investigation. We wait for that to come through. We called for impeachment, and Bill Clinton got impeached, but he also won an election. He was under the shadow of impeachment, but he still won an election, and he was more popular than then. This will empower him if they go for impeachment before you have the vote, before you have the process, and this will empower him, which will mean you'll see him until 2024, not for four years, but for eight years. So right now, it's nice to say, okay, let's impeach him, then we get President Pence. And then what? We got to wait for the process to go through.
Again, your facts are wrong. President Clinton was impeached after he won a impeachment.
No, but he was more popular after he was impeached. I didn't say he got re-elected. I never said that. Don't put words in my mouth. I didn't say that.
You got the order wrong. You said he won an election under the shadow of impeachment.
No, I said that he became more popular. He was under the shadow, if you were, I don't know if people were old enough to vote him, but they had restarted the process of investigating him. There was a, there was a special investigator at the time. They were investigating a thing called Whitewater, ever since the middle of his term, his first, of his first term. He became more popular after that, and then won even bigger.
At the end of the day, obstruction of justice is a high crime.
Do you agree that obstruction of justice- As soon as they can prove it.
If Bob Mueller was never born, the proof would already be there, from Trump's own statements. You don't believe there's proof that Trump did obstruction of justice by his own powers, where he admitted he fired the FBI director to kill a criminal investigation into his own people?
I also believe that the legal process should go through. If I caught a man standing over somebody that put a gun in his hands, I'm not going to convict him until he goes through the process, because we are a nation of laws. We just don't say, okay, let's send him to jail.
I just want to say something real quick. That doesn't, you know, just because this council has not, we're not ready to say that we're going to impeach him, that doesn't mean as private citizens as some of us have or have done it on my side. So just, you know, just understand that also, that it's just, so it doesn't mean that we are supporting the privacy of these men, so.
I know, but when you don't exercise the leadership and take that choice and make it public and be proud of it and own it-
Yeah, you know that.
You don't know that.
Right, but I'm asking the council, if it passed a resolution as other cities have, this would be lawful. This is lawful. Article 2, Section 4 of the Constitution, the President, Vice President, all civil officers of the U.S. shall be removed from office upon impeachment for conviction of treason, bribery, and other high crimes and misdemeanors.
And what, it's going to take 63 senators?
And? 67.
67, two-thirds.
I thought you were going to say, let the criminals stay in office?
No, I didn't say that. I said, let it go through the process.
But this is the process. The process is, Congress must initiate the proceedings. And I'm calling on my Congressman Frank Malone loud and clear, and the entire New Jersey delegation, to do it, to do it now before more damage is done. And I'm calling on you, my local elected officials, to do the same. Why won't you?
As a council, that may be as private citizens, but as a council, we've already come to, we're not going to do that.
Well, I'm going to keep calling for it.
I encourage you to do that.
Thank you. With all due respect, six months ago, you guys voted to give yourself a raise. You know, I was against it, you guys were for it, and it was a retroactive raise, so now you've been getting that raise, basically eight months' worth of the raise. Can you please identify your major accomplishments in those eight months?
I'm not going to justify that.
No. Not going to cite your own accomplishments?
I just said it. I said I'm not going to justify that, because we have passed several resolutions and everything else, but according to you, we didn't deserve it anyway. But as you're saying, if we think that we deserve a raise, I mean, I'm not going to justify, I'm not going to justify that with a response at this point, because unless we said we're going to impeach the president, or do everything else that you want us to do, you wouldn't be satisfied with it.
Correct, that is the number one issue in this country, is danger of any other.
No, that's your number one issue. My number one issue is kids that look like me that's getting shot down in the street every day, but for some reason, it's not important to you. Otherwise, you would have covered that. Never. You would have covered that. You would have been there, when you got, you would have been there, and you would have covered that, but that's not important to you. But if it was, excuse me, but if it was a male, if it was a black man getting arrested, you would put that on the front page. If there was something else that happened to a black man, you would, excuse me, you would-
Sir, do you read it?
What?
Do you read it?
No, not really, but I'm telling you.
Okay, you don't tell me what I cover, I don't cover. I was at a pre-order meeting that night.
Okay. Excuse me, you got other people to cover. I guarantee you, if it was somebody else, I guarantee, no, I guarantee you, if that was a black man that got arrested, you would have had that on your front page. Guaranteed.
You've never seen our paper. You're really, you're really disgraceful with this. You won't even tell us your own accomplishments. I asked in a respectful way, and you refuse to even cite your own accomplishments. That's a disgrace. Come on.
Buenas noches. ¿Queréis mi?
Yes.
Mi nombre es Ojilvia. My name is Ojilvia. Mi dirección es 145 en otro barrio. My address is 134 Fifth Avenue. Estamos aquí presentes para agradecerles. We are here present to thank you guys. For helping us install a water fountain in our community garden. Because it was really needed in our garden for our plants that we planted in our garden. And we want to present you with a thank you letter and a picture to show you our appreciation. Thank you. Gracias.
The answers are there. You didn't want to give them.
All right, Eric, name and address for the record, please.
All right, I said, Eric, and the title.
My name is Carlos Ramirez, reporter from New Brunswick. Today, to begin, I would like to thank the New Brunswick police for their free backpacks that were given on Walgreens, and I'd like to thank the wire utility for fixing the fire hydrant that broke that was actually taken down by a truck trailer to cover my house. And to begin with, I think that, as reported from Nebraska State, I personally have covered those, not only arrests from your type of people, which you're-
My type of people, type of people.
They're referring to people of less than color, on what I'm- they're referring to people of less than color, on what I'm saying.
You said white people.
But anyways.
People who look like you.
Yeah, people that look like you.
That's what you said.
People that look like you. And, yeah, I have covered those stories. We have shared them in our pages, we have done live broadcasts, we have written many reports of them, where it be good or bad, we cover it, and it's always in our newspapers. And I think if you were to read our paper, you will notice that we do cover positive and negative outcomes that happen in the city. And there's a lot of positive in that newspaper, it's not just about negativity only.
Same show, prove.
Read the paper, show the proof.
I'm sorry, I'm not talking, I'm gonna talk to him. Did you cover the Ponce de Prós giveaway the other day? Did you cover the rally that they had at Sunday Two?
We paused, we paused.
No, no, follow, click and follow, that. Did you cover the Juneteenth, the Juneteenth parade?
We are writing reports on it, we are covering.
I'm talking about an article, I'm not just talking about a quick blurb.
No, we both, we both break news on all our social media platforms. We have reporters writing their stories already. We're following up with local police, following with the prosecutor's office, with the courts, to see how the story is working out, and what are these cases gonna end up like.
Now, I'm not talking about crimes, that's what I'm saying, I'm not talking about crimes. And I'm not talking about people that shoot each other. I'm talking about stories that affect people, people that look like me, and they have the positive stuff. One of the events, the most recent event, the rally at the Masonic Temple, was one of the biggest rallies that had been held. One of the biggest rallies that had been held for young people trying to come up with solutions, not celebrating young people who are killing each other. Come up with a solution, and that was a first, because different groups came together who we never thought would come together. But when we don't cover stuff like that, it's as if it doesn't happen. And we know who was there, because we had a hashtag, we had a hashtag, you should be here, playing something. And whoever was there was there, they said, you should be here. So I'm just saying in the future, I mean, in the future, just show, just show the proof.
Just because you're not seeing that, that doesn't mean we're not working on reporting. Like, right now, I am working on many reports of good outcomes from your people that look like you and other stuff. We do share articles from other groups, other media, and we are.
But that's like a history book, I mean, something that's covered right there, it's easy to write about it, this happened last year.
We post many good outcomes, and I think that you saying that, saying that we don't cover it, and saying that you don't read the paper, I think that's something you should really look into reading the paper, just saying that we don't cover it.
Okay, so I'm gonna save it, just show you.
So if we brought you a newspaper, every time there's a city council meeting, will you read it? If we brought you a newspaper, will you read it?
No, I read online. I wanted to read it before, so you could give the benefit, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, this, you know.
Okay, then, I guess we'll email you every time there's a new official coming.
But I, see, I opened up the other paper, tapped into, it was actually there, front row.
Exactly, if it's not on our page yet, it's because we're covering it, or it's still, we're still getting reports.
That's nice, I don't want to go though.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Do I look like one?
I'm a different name.
What's your, um, I felt elaborate last council meeting because I was supposed to meet you down here, and I felt elaborate on the forum that we had a few weeks ago, which I agree was a success. And I proved, you know, it was a success because, you know, us as a team normally, and I didn't go on the record normally, if anybody looked at these council meetings, they'll see me and you going back and forth. Well, yeah, that one, that one won't go anywhere. But ultimately, when I reached out to you and we conversed, and you reached back out to me, and we decided to put the forum together, that's the things that I am looking for out of leadership. You know, I mean, you could have dumped, you could have hid, you could have said, ah, I'm busy, whatever. But, you know, we put the forum together, you know, it was a successful event, it was, you know, nice group of people out there, and we got, I think we got some resolve, we got momentum to move forward. The next scheduled forum is September twentieth, but it's gonna be in Franklin. But you're still gonna be as much a part of it as possible. Reaching out to Councilwoman Paulings, and she's gonna be getting us a facility till we can have another forum there, an additional forum. That forum there was an emergency forum. Now we're gonna be more calculated, opposed to, you know, if there haven't any recent problems that I know of. But the forum was great, I still get feedback from it. So, you know, great job, you know what I mean, great job, you know. I mean, when I feel like you did something wrong, definitely gonna let you know. But that was a, that was a great job, you did a great speech, you, you know, you prayed, and it was beautiful. And thank you for, this Escobar was in attendance, and it's good seeing you, you know. It was great, like I said, it was great, ex-police officers was there, it was good, you know. And, you know, that's more the things that we need. As far as elaborating on the Houston mission, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a tall task also. I did Flint Michigan last year, and Houston's gonna be a tall task. So I'm hoping that your constituents will support you and your effort, you know. I see now we can work together, it's not a problem. But hopefully, it's gonna be, like I said, it's gonna be a tall task, so hopefully your constituents won't just say, well, you know, you're working turn up, and that's your instinct, you know. That Houston relief on that forum is everybody's entirety of responsibility. I was hoping more council people would have came out to see the great work that me and you put together. And as far as the president, as I said, I don't care who, I mean, I'm not big on getting impeached because, you know, I had to live through baby, as baby Ronald Reagan, I had to live through George Bush, and George Bush, I had to live through Bill Clinton, and I had to live through, you know, I'm gonna say on record Barack Obama, because if you do any history to the record, you know, Obama deported more immigrants than any president in history. You know, and if we do, if we look at history as far as Donald Trump being, there were more Latinos that voted for Trump, there were more legal Latinos that voted for Donald Trump in history. So, I mean, I lived through some horrific presidents, and I know there's no presidents even before me there, Woodrow Wilson, Andrew Jackson, there's a number of presidents that were horrible. So to impeach a president is to do what? If any, I don't care what president we have in the seat, if they're not talking about reparations for blacks that went through the transatlantic slave trade in North America, I don't care what president we have, it could be black, white, yellow, or green. Until we start talking about reparations and paid labor, and even if you wanna talk about reparations for slavery, you still have to talk about reparations for Jim Crow. So you can't hit that box. Just give us reparations for one, because even as President Obama, we clap and we help for him, but he gave reparations to the Jewish community, and their Holocaust didn't even take place on American soil. We are the only ones who have won repaid for the damage and the Holocaust that we suffered in this country. We're the only ones that weren't allowed to read, we're the only ones that weren't allowed to write. We're the only ones that weren't allowed to walk on Saturday, it was horrific. And the country needs to repay for the damage. There's ramification damage for, I'm dealing with slave damage, I'm dealing with damages from slavery. And my kids are gonna deal with damages from slavery. Until we repair it, then I don't care who's the president, it could be Trump, it can be, it doesn't matter. So, I mean, impeaching them for what? Let's find a president that's gonna talk about reparations for African-Americans that were brought here through, by way of transatlantic slave trade.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none?
Posture to a jerk.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.